I'm going to call to order the Tuesday, August 20th, 2024, 6:00 PM, School Board Regular Meeting. Please rise for a moment of silence. Okay, I would now like to ask the Matanzas Color Guard to present the colors. Matanzas Color Guard is led by Cadet Captain Anna Hart, Cadet Captain Landon Smith, Cadet Corporal Andre Pella Pacino, and Cadet Corporal Elijah Sepersat. Also, Army Instructor Major Charles Mallard and Sergeant Tony Cirello.
Present, arms. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose bright stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the grand lines we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the first seen in the air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
May now retire the colors.
Order, arms. Right, face. Forward, march. Order, colors.
We will start with roll call.
Colleen Conklin, present.
Cheryl Moserow.
Sally Hunt.
Kristy Chong, present.
Will Furry, present.
LaShaka Moore.
Okay, so we're going to first go to special announcements. We have 2.02, "Dads Take Your Child to School Day," presented by John Finelli.
Good evening, Chairman Furry, School Board Members, Superintendent Moore. I am excited to be here to present this proclamation regarding "Dads Take Your Children to School Day." This year, speaking as a parent, my daughter is in middle school now. So in the morning, I get the pleasure of taking her to middle school. And it is a great experience. I have the time to just have some one-on-one time with her and talk to her about how things are going with her, with her school day, and just in life in general. And it's a great experience, and I'm glad that we are recognizing our fathers today and asking them on September 19th to take their child to work, to school that day. So I do have a proclamation here, which I will read. A resolution of the Flagler County School Board recognizing September 19th, 2024, as "Dads Take Your Child to School Day" in Flagler County. Whereas it is essential to ensure that Florida's children have a strong foundation and a good education; and whereas family engagement in education prepares our students to be lifelong learners and meaningful contributors to society; and whereas more than 30 years of research support the belief that a positive relationship endures between increased family engagement and student academic success; and whereas the involvement of fathers and father figures in our children's education brings many benefits, including improved test results and academic performance, better attitudes towards school, and a decreased likelihood of behavioral concerns; and whereas there are many ways that fathers and father figures can engage in the education of their children, including assisting with homework, regularly attending parent-teacher conferences, having an open dialogue with teachers concerning academic progress, participating in school activities, and arranging work schedules to bring their child to or from school; and whereas the Flagler Schools has witnessed the power of a father or father figure within programs such as the African-American Mentoring Program, in which students reengage in school and graduate with many going on to higher education or into the workforce; and whereas all Flagler School campuses are encouraged to invite fathers, stepfathers, grandfathers, uncles, brothers, foster fathers, and other significant male role models to participate in the achievement and development of their children. Now therefore be it resolved by the Flagler County School Board that we designate Thursday, September 19th, 2024, as Fathers Take Your Child to School Day in Flagler County, adopted by the members of the Flagler County School Board, Flagler County, Florida, at the regular, open, public meeting thereof held on the 20th day of August, 2024. Signed by School Board Chair Will Furry and Superintendent of Schools, Ms. LaShaka Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Finelli.
Thank you guys very much.
Okay, next, we have 2.03, National Arts and Education Week Proclamation, presented by Ms. Amy Farmer.
So I brought a special guest with me today, Dr. Marshawn Hyman. Marshawn owns a business, and some of his clients, he's in talent development. And some of his clients include the Getty Museum, Universal Music Group, and Disney, and we're really proud of that, but that's not why we brought him here today. We brought him here to talk about his life in Flagler County. He was in the musical in fifth grade. He was in middle school choir, he was in high school choir, he was in dance, he was in theater, and his first job was at the box office at Flagler Auditorium. So I thought it would be wise today to take this opportunity, since he's in town, to have him read the proclamation of arts and education. We have many students with stories like that, but we're very fortunate that Dr. Hyman is interested in being involved in our community. So I'll let you read, and then we also have the board here. We'll invite them up as soon as you're done. And we also have Anthony Wild from Kids Rock the Nation, who's come to see us too.
Board Members, Superintendent Moore, thank you for allowing me to be here this evening. I will be reading our resolution. A resolution of the Flagler County School Board recognizing the week of September 8th through 14th, 2024, as Arts and Education Week. Whereas arts education comprising a rich array of disciplines, including dance, media arts, music, theater, visual arts, and more, is a well-rounded subject and an essential element of a complete and well-rounded education for all students. And whereas arts education enables students to develop critical thinking and problem-solving skills, imagination and creativity, discipline and collaboration, alternative ways to communicate and express feelings and ideas, and cross-cultural understanding, which supports academic success across the curriculum. And whereas arts education contributes to increased attendance and graduation rates and prepares students for college, career, and citizenship readiness; and whereas arts education contributes to personal growth outside the classroom, including increasing a student's likelihood to participate in civic life, volunteerism, altruism, and community engagement; and whereas to succeed in today's economy, students must masterfully develop traits that business leaders demand as a 21st century workforce; and whereas the School Board of Flagler County is charged with the education and development of well-rounded students. Now therefore be resolved by the Flagler County School Board that we do hereby recognize September 8th through the 14th, 2024, as Arts and Education Week in Flagler County schools, and call upon all staff and families to observe the week with appropriate activities, adopted by members of the Flagler County School Board, Flagler County, Florida, at the regular, open, public meeting thereof held on the 20th day of August, 2024. Thank you.
While the board is coming up, I just want to brag on Dr. Hyman. He was my student in the second, second grade, Marshawn? And that smile, he had the exact smile, the best smile. Such a talented, incredible young man.
Well, let's gather for a picture.
We'll have you guys back up to the dais. I got you.
Thank you for being here, and thanks to the board. You know, they volunteer their time to keep that going, and we appreciate all of you. Okay, so we're going to move on to 2.04, Suicide Prevention and Awareness Month. Ms. Brandy Williams.
Good evening, Board.
Evening.
Good evening, Board and Superintendent Moore. My name is Brandy Williams. I'm the Coordinator of Counseling Services here at Flagler Schools, which means I have the honor and privilege of overseeing all of our licensed clinicians who provide the clinical services to our students on campuses, as well as the school social work team. It's amazing work. I am so grateful for all the experiences that we have with all of our students and with the work that I see our clinicians do with these students every day, overcoming a lot of obstacles and showing just how resilient they are. So I am here tonight to read the resolution around suicide awareness, and I just want to say that as a mental health provider, I know that students' mental health needs are a collaborative work effort between schools and community-based mental health providers, as well as our family members. So we can support our students who need help and create a safe, supportive space where they feel understood, validated, and empowered. Unfortunately, in the United States, suicide is the second-leading cause of death for people between the ages of 10 and 34. So it is something that is happening in our community. So with that, I will read the resolution. So whereas September is designated as National Suicide Prevention and Awareness Month as recognized by the National Association of Mental Illness; and whereas many health officials and community leaders, locally, state, and nationally, understand that mental illness is a significant issue of concern, particularly among our youth; and whereas we realize that addressing mental health issues requires more open and honest discussions about mental health; and whereas one major hurdle is removing the stigma attached to mental health treatment and discussion; and whereas parents, teachers, administrators, coaches, mentors, public officials, and peer students recognize the importance of emotional health; and whereas we can all play a valuable role in assisting others who may show symptoms of stress, depression, anxiety, or mental illness. Now therefore be it resolved by the Flagler County School Board that Flagler Schools recognizes the month of September as National Suicide Prevention and Awareness Month; and be it further resolved that Flagler Schools staff will encourage a positive, safe school environment and encourage helping others while also promoting access to school-based mental health supports and recognizing when young people are at risk for or are experiencing mental health problems, adopted by the Board Members of Flagler County School Board, Flagler County, Florida, at the regular, open, public meeting thereof held on the 20th day of August, 2024. Signed by William Furry, Chair, School Board of Flagler County, and Ms. LaShaka Moore, Superintendent of Flagler Schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we'll move on to 2.05, Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, presented by Jaffe Lee and Matthew Stalek. Welcome.
Good morning, or good evening, Board Members. My name is Jaffe Lee. I am the Emergency Manager for the Florida Department of Health in Flagler County. Thank you for having us here. Thank you, Chair, and Ms. Moore. I'm proud to introduce to you Matthew Stalek. He is our Public Information Officer. He is going to read tonight.
I'd like to just start off by thanking you guys for the opportunity to be here, and I'm very excited for the implementation that you guys have planned. So a resolution of the Flagler County School Board recognizing the month of September as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in Flagler County. Whereas each year, thousands of children are diagnosed with the life-threatening disease of cancer; and whereas childhood cancer is the leading cause of death by disease in children; and whereas two-thirds of childhood cancer patients will have chronic health conditions as a result of their treatment toxicity, with one-quarter being classified as severe to life-threatening; and whereas the National Cancer Institute recognizes the unique research needs of childhood cancer and the associated need for increased funding to carry this out; and whereas researchers and healthcare professionals work diligently, dedicating their expertise to treat and cure children with cancer; and whereas hundreds of nonprofit organizations at the local and national level, including the American Childhood Cancer Organization, are helping children with cancer and their families cope through educational, emotional, and financial support; and whereas increased awareness will bolster public support of the disease and thus increase funding for the development of new treatment options and diagnostic tools; and whereas every two minutes, a child is diagnosed with cancer and will hear the words, "You have cancer." And whereas the quality of life of these beautiful children will depend on future treatment and diagnosis developments; and now therefore be it resolved by the Flagler County School Board, the month of 2024, or September in 2024, is observed as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month; and be it further resolved that Flagler Schools urges all citizens of Flagler County, interest groups, and affected persons to join us in promoting awareness of childhood cancer and fostering the understanding of the impact of the disease on these small patients and their families and their caregivers, as well as take an active role in the fight to end childhood cancer, adopted by the members of the Flagler County School Board, Flagler County, Florida, at the regular, open, public meeting thereof held on the 20th day in August, 2024. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so now we'll move on to Spotlight. And to start off tonight, we have a student spotlight from a Kansas high school, Logan Picaro.
Yes, and if we could have Logan come before us, and you could stand here in front, Logan. We're going to talk a little bit about you, then we're going to take a picture. But we are giving a certificate of recognition to Logan Picaro for his outstanding courage, compassion, and community service while coming to the aid of fellow Flagler County residents. And this is presented to you from the Flagler County School Board. Logan, if you're not aware, Logan aided in helping to provide a safe place for our family that was experiencing a fire at their home. And so thank you for being willing to serve our community. We appreciate you very much, and thank you. Going to get a picture.
The big story at 5:30, a 15-year-old patient has positive for fentanyl.
And so now we're going to move on to 3.02, or sorry, 3.01, Superintendent Moore.
Yes, so our team is, they were ready to press play for it, but the superintendent's in the Seventh Circuit came together and worked on an initiative with our state attorney, and we wanted to take a moment to just highlight that work because at the end of the day, we know that across our circuit, we're experiencing some of the same things. And so we are taking a more collaborative approach at addressing things as, of course, individual to our community, but how do we work together in order to address issues within our, within our community? So you will see the spotlight for that. I want to just talk, just highlight Mr. John Finelli. Mr. John Finelli was instrumental in bringing not just the superintendent together, but the staff for four districts together. He did spearhead the time, and so thank you so much for your time of helping this, to see this get accomplished. So thank you, John Finelli. All right. We'll press play, and we'll move on to the next. All right. We'll press play and we'll move on to the next spotlight.
The big story at 5:30, a 15-year-old's vape test positive for fentanyl.
Investigators say they've arrested a 17-year-old, charged him with manslaughter in the overdose death of another teen.
11 high school students are under arrest because of this massive fight.
The students had a hit list of students they wanted to fight, as well as a fatal hit list of students they intended to kill.
And the breaking news, a sudden turn of events, a teenage girl accused of shooting at Volusia County Sheriff's deputies a year and a half ago.
Sentenced to 20 years in prison.
We want to help change the script.
Empowering students.
It's something we can all get behind.
And we are doing it.
United.
Flagler.
Putnam.
St. Johns.
Volusia.
All four counties in the Seventh Circuit.
We care about our students, staff.
And our community.
We want to help keep you and your family safe.
It's our top priority.
And together, we're taking a proactive approach.
To start the new school year, all four districts will be including curriculum on substance use and violence in our required instruction.
And the importance of if you see something, say something.
We are also implementing circuit-wide consequences.
For students who engage in substance use and violence in our schools.
And we will be raising awareness through public service announcements, which will be shared with all of our parents and throughout our communities.
Preparing students for the future.
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 Safety first, success always.
And I know it's sometimes hard to watch those things, but we are not naive to the fact that our students are struggling in some of these areas, and so this is really about coming together to support our students, to help provide resources to their families, as well as to help educate our community around the resources that are available so that our students can get help when they are struggling to make right choices, or they're struggling with tobacco, or they are struggling with vaping. It's real, and so for us, we don't want to just put our heads in the sand. We're gonna come together and work at it, on it, as a collaborative for the Seventh Circuit.
Great.
Okay, so thank you for that, Superintendent Moore. We're gonna move on to 3.02 NIFAC Aspiring Leaders Program Spotlight, Dr. O'Brien.
All right, good evening. So the NIFAC Aspiring Leaders Program is a leadership pipeline strategy that's used to encourage staff to consider a leadership position in the future, and we do this program in partnership with NIFAC. It does consist of three modules. One is Effective School Leadership. So participants are learning about facilitative leadership, interacting with disruptive staff, and are exposed to the school grade calculation. Module two is the Leader as Coach. It introduces participants to instructional coaching and the use of conversation to assist teachers with instruction, and then they conduct a coaching cycle. And the third module is the Leader as Administrator, and it investigates the roles and responsibilities of the school leader, including practical problem-solving and ethical leadership. Participants complete an inbox activity and interact with a school crisis simulation. So I will be recognizing all of our teacher leaders who have completed the Aspiring Leaders Program. First, Tonya Fisher, and come on up. Ellen Asher. Joshua Reinert. Candace Billick. Fiorella Albrecht. Ivana Freddard. Ida Sierra. Elizabeth Diaz. Rudra Desai. Amber DiMetropolis. Heidi Hartshorn. Stephanie Palmieri. Diane House. Carrie Harris. Michelle Grady. Jessica Clark. Craig Cavalieri. Shakia Brown. Tina Kalar. And congratulations to everyone who completed the program.
Congratulations. Good gather in the middle for a picture here.
Oh. I want to take a moment to say thank you to our building administrators, as well as their supervisors that are here to support them. Thank you so much for being here in support of your people. Can we give a round of applause to their administrators and their supervisors?
Okay, so we're gonna now move on to 3.03 NIFAC Principal Leadership Academy Spotlight.
All right, so the NIFAC Principal Leadership Academy is a Level 2 School Principal Program, and it is a state-approved pathway that leads to school principal certification with the Florida Department of Education. It is 15 months of content with breaks and consists of two field experiences, a capstone action research project, mentorship by highly qualified school-based administrators, progress monitoring through use of rubrics, which are aligned to the Florida Educational Leadership Standards, and quarterly progress reviews. And I'd like to congratulate Althea Thompson for completing the program.
All right, our next spotlight is Flagler County Education Foundation, Ms. Teresa Rizzo. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Furry, Superintendent Moore, and School Board members. Thank you again for the opportunity to allow us to impact, to spotlight the impact of our local community partners through the work of the Education Foundation, which is led by its Board of Directors. And I would just like to say that I thought we were known as the party planners, but I think LaShawka Moore needs to be on my event planning committee after the party we had this morning, so. And Ms. Thompson, you should have wore that outfit that you wore this morning. So tonight, I'm excited to share three notable initiatives from this summer. First, I'd like to recognize Beaver Toyota of St. Augustine as a valued community partner. Beaver Toyota was honored with the Commissioner's Business Recognition Award by Mr. Manny Diaz from the Florida Department of Education. This award acknowledged their unwavering support through the Beaver Toyota Fund, a project teacher grant program. Last year, Beaver Toyota, in collaboration with the Florida Consortium of Education Foundations, contributed over $60,000 in teacher grants. This support impacted 10 of our schools, benefited 30 of our teachers, reaching about 12,413 students in our district. And I'd like to let teachers know and administrators that the platform will open next week, two weeks, August 30th, for teacher grants for this year, and it will close on September 29th. We're excited to have Beaver again as a partner for providing innovative opportunities for our teachers. Next is our Stuff Bus Program, which has been actively supported by community partners such as Miller's Ale House, Intercoastal Bank, FB Real Estate, and many, many other businesses around our community. We successfully were able to provide 1,500 backpacks during our back-to-school jam. We also delivered a backpack to every single VPK student in our district this year, and teachers throughout the district are now equipped and able to request essential supplies for their individual classrooms. Nobody should go without what is fundamental for education this year. Finally, thanks to the Hunter Foundation's generous funding, we are thrilled to announce that tomorrow we will be visiting nine of our schools. I know they've been waiting very patiently to deliver grants that will be awarded for classroom-to-careers programs. These grants align seamlessly with the Superintendent's Diploma Plus Initiative, supporting our commitment to enhancing educational opportunities beyond the classroom. The Flagler County Education Foundation is dedicated to supporting our students, our educators, and our families. We're deeply grateful for the unwavering support of our community partners, and together we remain steadfast in the mission to elevate educational programs and move Flagler forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Rizzo.
Thank you, Mrs. Rizzo. Okay, next up, 3.05. We're gonna have Mr. Ullahan come and recognize our state champions from Metansas and FPC.
Thank you, Chair, School Board member, Superintendent Moore. I'm here tonight to honor and present our final 2024 state champions from Flagler Schools. As you recall from our last time, two of our student athletes were out, competing at the national level. So tonight, I will be representing Flagler Palm Coast High School. We congratulate Christina Borgman and from Metansas High School for the final time, Mariah Mills. Please join me in applauding these remarkable athletes for the exceptional accomplishments and representing Flagler Schools with excellence and sportsmanship. At this time, I would like to invite Principal Kristen Bozeman, Principal Bobby Bosserdett, and I did see Athletic Director Scott Drazback sitting back there to the podium to speak about the accomplishments of these remarkable student athletes. And our two athletes.
The one with all the gold.
Yes.
Yes. All right, thank you, Board Chair Furry, Board members, and Superintendent Moore, for granting us the opportunity to recognize our athletes and their extraordinary accomplishments. Today, we have the distinct honor of celebrating a historic moment in FHSAA history, the first-ever brother-sister state champions. Jordan and Mariah Mills have both demonstrated exceptional talent, perseverance, and dedication, and their accomplishments speak volumes. Jordan completed his senior wrestling season with a flawless 52-0 record, culminating in a state championship in the 195-pound weight class. A three-time state qualifier, Jordan's journey reached its pinnacle last year with his state title. He also holds the school records for an impressive 179 career wins and 102 career pins. Jordan demonstrated incredible resiliency working through injuries, including at the state competition in his final bout when he became injured but completed the match, coming back from a 5-0 deficit and basically defeating his opponent with one arm. Jordan is not present to be recognized today because he deferred his opportunity to be a collegiate athlete to serve as a missionary for his faith in Hong Kong, China. This selfless decision is one example of Jordan's exceptional character and how he has made Metansas proud. Mariah, equally remarkable, finished her junior season with a 41-1 record, remaining undefeated in Florida last year. She dominated the FHSAA State Tournament, pinning her way to a state championship. Mariah also earned the prestigious title of NHSCA National Champion. Mariah is a two-time Metansas State Champion, as she was also a member of our State Champion Lady Wrestling Team in the 2023 season. Mariah is a joy to know and an absolute thrill to watch wrestle. She's kind, confident, and friendly. It's been wonderful to have her part of multiple sports at Metansas over the last few years, and we're so proud of her accomplishments. Metansas High School would also like to extend our heartfelt gratitude to the Mills family for their unwavering support and dedication, not only to Jordan and Mariah, but the entire Metansas Wrestling Program and Athletic Department. We also want to thank our coaches for their guidance and commitment. Without their collective efforts, these incredible victories would not have been possible. Thank you.
And good evening, Mr. Furry, members of the Board, and Ms. Moore. Once again, thank you for having us from FPC here to brag about Ms. Christina Borgman. Christina won the 2024 FHSAA State Girls Wrestling Championship in the 125-pound weight class, also pinning her way to that championship. She went on to become a National High School Coaches Association All-American, where she also won that tournament as well in the 125-pound class. Also, her story is pretty neat as well. Early on in the season, she had a pretty bad shoulder injury that we didn't know if she was gonna be able to continue, and that night that it happened, I was actually at our National Athletic Directors Conference, and her dad called me and said, "Coach, don't you worry. She's gonna come back. She's gonna win a state title," and sure enough, she did, in very exciting fashion down there in Kissimmee. So we are so proud of her. She was also our 2024 FPC Female Athlete of the Year, voted on by the coaches of our athletic department. So we are very excited to honor Ms. Christina Borgman, also as a state champion for Flagler County.
Come here up front for a picture.
Guys, here we go, right up here, big smiles.
Okay, yes.
All right, one more.
Yes.
All right. Good evening, Chair Furry, School Board members, and Superintendent Moore. Once again, I'm thrilled and honored to speak on a coach that goes beyond, this is not gonna do anything, this is just a recognition for him. When I entered the district in 2015, this is a coach that everybody knew. You just knew the name. And as a former coach at Metansas High School, it's a name that everybody knows in the state. So for the outstanding achievements, and I'm not, like I said, not only the best coaches in Flagler County, not Florida, but really in the entire United States. So tonight, representing Flagler Palm Coast High School, we have the honor to recognize and congratulate David Halliday. David Halliday has been, was honored by the National High School Coaches Athletic Association as a finalist for Coach of the Year. So to mention a few of his accomplishments, and I really don't want to step on any toes, but if you're not familiar with Coach Halliday, and really for our public, he's, has 30 years of head coaching in Florida schools. His career varsity win-loss record is 2,080 and 226, so that's a 90% win rate. The NFHS rep at Track and Field Annual Meeting twice, the FAC A Track and Field Chair, seven-year state clinician, ten-time, FHSAA Track and Field Advisory Committee, 15 years, three state team championships, one runner-up finish. The NHSACA National Coach of the Year finalist, two times, the FAC A Hall of Fame- The FAC A Hall of Fame inductee, Florida Dairy Farmer State Coach of the Year, three times. The FTNF Hall of Fame inductee. So that, and that's just probably a little bit. So, you know, he's in his 31st season, going to be entering his 31st season. So tonight, please join and applaud him as a remarkable coach for his exceptional accomplishments and dedication, representing Flagler Schools with excellence. At this time, I would like to invite Athletic Director Scott Drazback to the podium.
There's so much more stats that we could talk about Coach Halliday. Again, it's the four state championships, it's the three runner-ups, it's 21 district championships. This past year, we celebrated the 20th anniversary of the East Coast Classic, which is one of the best track and field meets anywhere in the state that we get to host in Selkampanella Stadium, and that was created and is ran yearly by Coach Halliday. He's a 2015 FAC A Florida Athletic Coaches Association Hall of Fame member. And again, he's widely regarded as, if not the best, one of the best coaches in our state. I think what separates him from all of the accomplishments, though, is the authentic and real relationships that he builds with students each and every day, and the impact that he makes on every type of student, doesn't matter what corner of this county they're from, and how he can move them from one place to another over four years. He's a mentor for our young coaches, and he is just absolutely one of the best, the best. So we are so proud of him and all of his accomplishments. And this honor this summer was just a small piece of recognition for really the great that he does for our school district. So once again, please join me in congratulating him.
Here we go. Tommy, would you two swap on the ends? Thank you, thank you. Here we go, guys. Very nice. One, two, smiles, big smile. Do I get to stand next to him or the wife? Boy, lots of great announcements and spotlights tonight. But that concludes those, and we will move on with the rest of our board business. So now we're going to go on to the approval of the minutes. I need a motion to approve.
Move approval.
Okay. I've got a motion by Dr. Conklin and a second by Ms. Massaro to approve the minutes 4.01 through 4.06. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Hearing none, passes unanimously. So now we'll move on to the adoption of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda tonight, Superintendent Moore?
Yes, I request that we pull 9.01. As we discussed today in the board meeting, 9.01, it was for I Flagler. We needed to write a school improvement plan for the elementary portion of I Flagler. But now that we have merged the elementary and the secondary portion, we no longer need to bring that before you. That will come before you in October as one plan for all of I Flagler. So I do request that we pull item 9.01.
Thank you for that.
Board Chair, please let the record reflect. I'll be abstaining from 9.03 and file the appropriate paperwork for having a conflict, considering I'm an employee of Emory Riddle.
Thank you for that clarification, Dr. Conklin. Okay, so I need a motion to adopt the agenda as amended.
I'm sorry, just for point of clarification. Item 10.04, did we need to amend that to include the fee?
Well, did they? It's updated. Apparently, they've accepted it.
No, I understand that. Does it need to, do we need to pull that to action to amend it, to include that? Or is that not necessary?
It's not necessary.
Okay, great.
So, because the agreement has been updated.
Approved.
Okay, great. Thank you again, Dr. Conklin. Okay, so I had a motion from Ms. Massaro to adopt the agenda. I need a second.
Second.
Second from Ms. Chong. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes unanimously. So we'll move forward with this agenda. And we will start with public comment. Do we have anybody signed up for public comment?
None had signed up.
Okay. Seeing no approach, I will close public comment. And we will move on to our consent items. And just for the benefit of the public, we will move through these because we've already workshopped these items, so it will move quickly. So we'll start with finance consent, and that's 7.01 through 7.05. I need a motion to approve.
Move approval.
I have a motion by Ms. Hunt. Need a second.
Second.
Second from Ms. Massaro. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, passes unanimously. We will now move on to academic service consent. And this will be items 9.02 through 9.06, of which Dr. Conklin says she will abstain from this vote. And so I need a motion to approve.
Move approval.
I have a motion by Ms. Chong. I need a second.
Second.
Second from Ms. Massaro. Any discussion? Seeing none, I will call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, we'll pass this unanimously. All right, so now we're going to go on to operational services consent. And that is 10.01 through 10.04. Need a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion for Ms. Massaro, a second.
Second.
Second from Ms. Chong. Any discussion?
Do we need to pick which one we're going with?
On which agenda item?
Which lease?
The 10.03.
The 10.03. The option two.
Okay, option. Did we specify that in the document? Or do we need to actually approve that one individually to approve that?
I think the lease gives the board the option of, I'll defer to Mr. Freeman, but I think that operationally, we could change horses midstream. Is that how you read the agreement?
The lease itself has option two written, as we discussed today at the board meeting.
Okay. So I think it's known that the board's wishes are that we go with the option two, okay? All right, so I had a motion by you, Ms. Massaro, and a second by Ms. Chong. Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Hearing none, we'll pass it unanimously. So we have human resource consent, 11.01 through 11.05. Need a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Motion by Ms. Chong.
Second.
Second by Ms. Hunt. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, passes unanimously. Okay, so now we go down to superintendent consent, 12.01 through 12.02. Need a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Massaro.
Second.
A second by Ms. Chong. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, passes unanimously. We'll now move forward to public comment, once again.
We do have one person for public comment.
Okay.
And that's Cindy Boils.
Okay, Ms. Boils, please come forward.
Her comment is regarding board attendance.
Superintendent Moore, Chair Ferry, and the Flagler County School Boards, thank you for having me. As an elected board member has chosen not to fulfill their obligation as a Flagler County School Board member by not physically attending school board meetings as well as missing all additional school board events, including but not limiting to the last two years of high school graduation. Not only do these actions make the entire school board look weak and inefficient, they border a potential Florida ethics violation. However, this same board member has been accepting biweekly paychecks and collecting benefits for services not provided. It is in my opinion that this board is committing fraud against every Flagler taxpayer and must be held accountable and investigated by the state attorneys general. Also, my sister Cheryl Massar, and I'm not afraid to admit it.
Please direct your comments to me.
I'm sorry, board. You let somebody call somebody bully. We're a non-bully school here. And that came from another board member, which I don't appreciate. If you've been into the school districts for 45 years and you know what she knows, then you have a right to come up and talk to her. But till then, nobody should call anybody that name bully. That is insufficient and not acceptable. And smile. Smile all you want at me.
Please, are you done with your comments, ma'am? Okay, please come forward.
Hello, I'm sure you remember me. I wanted to read something regarding cell tower and EMF safety at Flagler County Public Schools. This is from a website called EH Trust. Cell towers, 5G, cell antennas emit a type of non-ionizing radiation called radiofrequency radiation. The company seemed to say to put these antennas on school grounds because the radiation emissions meet federal government FCC guidelines for allowable human exposure to the public. However, FCC limits do not ensure safety. Hundreds of studies show harm. Even the companies caution their shareholders of the risk, so they protect their shareholders, but not the public. T-Mobile's 2023 Security and Exchange Commission filing states, "We, along with equipment manufacturers and other carriers, are subject to current and potential future lawsuits alleging adverse health effects arising from the use of wireless handsets or from wireless transmission equipment such as cell towers. In addition, the FCC, from time to time, gather data regarding wireless device emissions and its assessments of the risk associated with using wireless devices may evolve based on its findings." Basically, if I go through this, their Securities and Exchange Commission filing, basically T-Mobile neglected to inform the parents that a commissioned report entitled EcoLog Institute Report, which reviewed the science on the health effects and recommended an RF exposure 1,000 times lower than the FCC current power density limit. So there are schools, districts, and counties all across the United States, all across the United States, that are taking measures to limit non-native electromagnetic field exposure to students and teachers in schools. I would like Flagler County to join that movement. I know that I came here talking about the cell tower at FPC, and I know that you did what you thought was prudent. The site safe is just a shill for the telecom companies. Like he said in his report, they never found a cell tower out of compliance with FCC regulations on radiofrequency radiation. So maybe that would have been helpful beforehand, before you paid them to do a job for you. I'm not blaming you guys, I'm just saying, this is way over everybody's head here. I've studied this since 2014, 2015, worked with a neurosurgeon with those years studying the effects of electromagnetic fields. We need to look at this, and I need somebody to contact me. I created a Facebook page, Flagler Parents for Safe Technology. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay. All right, so then we will close public comment and move on to board member requests. Do we have any board member requests? Seeing none, we'll move forward to upcoming board discussion topics. We touched on that a little bit earlier today. Is there anything more to talk about there? Okay?
If I just may add, that the half-cent sales tax update should come in September, but that will actually be in October. So I just wanted to put it on record that that presentation will be in October and not September, which is outlined in the committee's report, is that they come before the board in September. But it will be in October of this year.
And a separate topic than that, but it might be good for us to get on the agenda the collective evaluation for the superintendent, right? So at least put a deadline on it and a date on it, and then this way we can move forward with that. Okay?
Yes, yes. I will definitely make sure that we get that on there.
And thank you for the half penny update.
Yes. And if, and I do apologize for going out of order, but we do have some date conflicts. If we could just look at those dates at this time to see if we can make some adjustments. September 17th is a Tuesday, obviously because that's when we meet. We are requesting to see if that meeting can actually be held on September 18th, which is a Wednesday. We would move the September 17th meetings to September 18th.
Is that a 1 o'clock or 3?
It's both. Okay. And then one other conflict is the October 15th meeting. If we could move that meeting to Monday, October 14th.
Is that a 1 o'clock or 3 o'clock?
Same, right?
Same.
1 and 6.
I work every single Monday, so I don't know. Whatever you guys are good with.
On the 15th or the 14th?
The 14th. I can do the 14th, but I can't do the...
I'm sorry?
For the conflicts?
It's the conflict. One is Mr. Delaney's. We're trying to work around Mr. Delaney's schedule for this conflict on the October 15th date.
I mean, I could probably at least be here at 6.
The 14th is Columbus Day, does it matter?
Let's look.
We have...
Do we have school? I show up every day.
Back in the day, we didn't have school, but I don't know about now.
Yeah, it changes.
Does anybody have the calendar right there in front of you? I'm so sorry, let me look.
It's also Indigenous Peoples' Day, just saying.
It is a teacher work day.
Okay.
We will be working teachers. Based on the ratification that just happened, the teachers will have the option to work from home, but we will, staff will still be here.
Gotcha.
Well, I'm good either of those days, so I can be flexible.
Send them to like our calendars, so I can try to make adjustments.
Okay.
And the October 14th, that's our third, that's our business meeting night, we're saying, right?
It is.
That is going to be my last school board meeting.
October 15th?
Yes, that business night. Or the 14th, whenever we do it.
Right, because we'd only have one more workshop before the next business meeting.
Yeah.
Just saying.
Right.
Are you available to come on the 14th?
14th works.
Yes, I sure am.
14th works.
I will be there.
Okay.
It's a September one.
Thank you. We will make these adjustments.
All right, thank you. Okay, so now we will move on to closing comments. Okay, so now we will move on to closing comments. Dr. Conklin, do you have any closing comments?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I cannot tell a lie. I was just looking, trying to see the election results. Okay. Sorry.
A little early.
No, they're actually up, but I can't see. Anyway, I just wanted to thank Superintendent Moore and her entire team for what a great morning. It was fun, it was informative, it was just great. So, thank you for inviting us, it was great to participate, and the games were fun, got everybody up and moving, but I just want to congratulate you and your team on a great kickoff, and welcome back for the teachers. Other than that, I really don't, I don't have, that's it.
I want to also congratulate the facilities and plant services for getting FPC lot done in time. I know it was a stretch, and I know it wasn't easy, but it looks great, and it's been long time overdue. So congratulate everybody involved in moving that along. That was wonderful. And the other thing we have is obviously there's an election that is over, as of two minutes ago, so we should have elected two new board members, and we're looking forward to welcoming them and getting them ready for the school year. They'll get seated in November. They get seated officially in November. And then the other only thing I was going to do is I was going to comment to Ms. Hunt's comments this afternoon, but you know what? I'm not going there, because it's not worth my getting to that position. So I just wish everybody, it was a great opening, we got to move Flagler forward, everybody's working together, let's continue.
Good evening. I just have a quick few things. One, just again, congratulations to our student athletes who were recognized tonight, and to our student hero who was recognized tonight. We've got just incredible, incredible kids in this community, young people in this community, which leads me to my second thing. I tend to like praise Superintendent Moore because I'm just such a fan of hers, and I sometimes forget to put the credit, not that it doesn't belong here, it does, but to put the credit to the teachers, the non-instructional staff, the students who do the really hard work. I wanted to make sure I wasn't missing anybody. The administration, our cabinet. Wow, I am just, the results from this past testing, I'm thrilled. As a community member, as a school board member, I was just so excited to hear about the news. And that's last school year, and so now to have this brand-new school year with this great momentum of Flagler Forward is just really exciting. And I mentioned in the workshop, Superintendent Moore, do we have three schools or more who are going to get to spend some achievement dollars?
I think it's actually going to be five schools, but don't quote me on it, that's off the top of the dome, but I think it's five schools.
Yeah, and for those in the community, there is state funding, am I saying that right? There is state funding for our schools. When they go from one grade up, they get rewarded with some great funding that the teachers get to decide, or at least in Flagler schools, the teachers decide how to spend that. So that's really exciting. And then to continue with the election tonight, I just wanted to say, I was actually, someone reached out to me about who was I endorsing, and not that that matters, and I voted who I voted for, but I'm really excited to see who wins tonight. Personally, I really appreciate it all, four backgrounds. I think whoever is elected, they're going to do a great job and put Flagler first and be part of Flagler Forward, and so whoever we find out wins tonight, congratulations to them, and we look forward to them joining the board. So, thank you all very much, and have a safe evening.
Yeah, not much, just happy first week back. Yeah, and this morning was great, just love the chance to be a part of what's going on, even though we're not here on a daily basis. It's nice to be included and happy to have the kids back in school and on a routine, so looking forward to a great year ahead.
Yes, and I also really enjoyed today, being there. I just want to thank everybody that was there bright and early, ready to serve, our faculty and staff, our board, who is also, members that also joined, and Superintendent Moore. It was a great example of servant leadership, and it was such a joy to see the smiles on everybody's faces. And I also want to thank you for a great presentation this afternoon, it was very informative, and I think it helped set the tone and to start off a great new school year.
Can I just add, before you give your final remarks, our two new school board members, Lauren Ramirez and Janie Ruddy.
All right.
All right.
All right.
So, today was a great day, a great day of professional learning, but having a good time as well with our team, and so just want to thank everyone who really worked to put that forward. I'm sure our staff is ready for it to be done. They're tired of probably hearing about it, they're tired of practicing it, making sure that it's right. We want the best for Flagler schools, and every day we want to show up and do that. I want to say to our families, please, 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 if you have not done your annual registration documents, please complete those documents, so we have the utmost current and up-to-date information on your student. I always like to just bring us back to the core of who we are as an organization. And I want to take a moment to read our vision, and I want to read our guiding principles, because this is what we sign up for every day, and this is what we signed up for when we said we were going to work to move Flagler schools forward. So our vision says, "As a courageous, innovative leader in education, Flagler schools will be the nation's premier learning organization, where all students graduate as socially responsible citizens with the skills necessary to reach their maximum potential." And our guiding principles say, "Children first," and I always pause here, because when we hear children first, it does not mean children first and adults last. But we have to first think about, how will this decision impact our students? And so, children first, trust and respect for all, empower others, teamwork, and I'm glad that Ms. Hunt acknowledged that anytime she says LaShaka Moore, I hear our team, because we work to do it together. You know, I'm just one person, but together, we can do great things. Excellence, quality and consistency, commitment to individual needs, and then my favorite is get to yes, and our team hears me say this often, is get to yes within a well-defined system, so we can continue to say yes. And so, it's been a great day, it's going to be a great school year. I am honored to serve as superintendent during this time. Thank you so much, and have a great night. See you tomorrow. Those of you who feel like, is tomorrow day off, because we've had such a long day, it is not. See you tomorrow. And tomorrow is the seventh day of school. Don't get confused, day seven.
All right, let me clarify, there are still precincts missing.
There's still counting.
So let's make it, let's see where it goes.
All right, we'll just wait till the results come in from the SRE.
You're right, I agree. I just wanted to clarify.
All right. Thank you, everybody. This meeting is adjourned.